To order the. Calling to order the planning board meeting for June sixth, twenty twenty-three. The first thing that we need to do is to ask Vivian, I hope I'm doing this, I've sort of forgotten what my, what I need to do. The first thing we need to do is um meeting management rules and Vivian can walk us through that. So Vivian, take it away.
Okay, thank you. And do have some members from the public here, so I'll just go through it and Devin will show the slides. So, thank you, everybody from the public who's with us here tonight. We do appreciate you taking your time to join us. And I will share some rules which are in place to help us achieve a balance between transparency with community members and security also that minimizes disruptions. And thanks for your patience for those of you that have heard this over and over. So we want everybody to know that the city is really striving into a vision co-created by city staffing community for productive, meaningful and inclusive conversations. And we've worked with community to develop these expectations for meetings. And the vision is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue while also recognizing that we want to make sure everybody feels safe here and we want to make sure that we make space for different viewpoints. Next slide. So we have a lot of information on our website about what we call our productive atmospheres vision if you're interested. And there's a number of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code and we have general guidelines that are advisory in nature. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in the session. Obscenities, racial epithets, another speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue in the moment is prohibited. And we do also ask that everybody who wishes to speak from the public and and everybody actually here displays their first and last name so that we can call you and we know who's providing input. So we're in the Zoom webinar format and it allows participants from the public to speak at the designated times. But we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns. No pre-existing list for signing up to participate today. So at the right time during the public comment or public hearing later tonight, which is for the building energy code update. You need to raise your virtual hand and you can do this by the very bottom of your screen clicking on the virtual hand icon from the horizontal menu that has three clickable items. So if you click on that, we'll know that you would like to speak. If you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on reactions. And if you're joining us by phone, you can dial star nine and we will get that virtual hand next to your name and know that you would like to speak. So again, we're recording this and next up is the public comment section, which is for you to share any comments which are outside of the agenda with the planning board. That's it for me. Back to you, Sarah.
Thanks, Vivian. I see that ML is uh needs to be let let in. And if you wouldn't mind doing that.
Yep.
All right, so we have no, no minutes to approve or not approve, so we'll go directly to public participation. Uh, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any issue that they would like to accept the the public hearing matter. Um, and the public hearing matter is the energy code update. I'm sorry, the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code Development Project. So a little bit different. So um if you have, if you want to make a comment on any topic other than the agenda item, please raise your hand and Vivian will call on you and 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 give you a three-minute clock.
Okay, so we just have one hand. Um, if anybody else wishes to speak now, please raise your hand. I know Lynn likes to go last. All right, Lynn, you're the only hand up. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
I couldn't unmute until just then, so can I get my ten seconds back? Thanks, Vivian. You know me and I admire you for getting those kids to go on the three sixty in the rain. You are a woman of deep power, mysterious powers. So, um, what do I want to discuss today? I guess what's on everyone's mind is our deadline for property tax refutation on Thursday. And I've been just swamped with catalytic converters stolen, thirty-seven hundred dollars. This is what people are experiencing in this community. This is why it's so imperative that you do something about real affordable housing, real affordable housing. And that means cutting down the subsidies to these developers. Because the higher price jobs you get, you know, higher um higher level jobs, the more service people for each of those jobs. And the more service people for each of those high-level jobs. Now, it's not just jobs-housing balance, it's what kind of jobs to the housing. So, these tech jobs that, you know, CU is producing, CU South. It's, this is just a disaster for this community. And I can speak to you going on fifty degrees all winter long. My productivity as a seventy-year-old is very limited. I get eight months that I am under two down comforters. Uh, you know, I have to have my hat and my gloves on to brush my teeth all winter long. So then when I get the summer, then what happens? Well, it's tax year, so I have to fight the appeal. Then I have to, when I, in August, then I'll be starting again with the Board of Equalization. And then after I get that dispensation, I'll go after the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, and my catalytic converter stolen, thirty-seven hundred dollars. And it'll probably be stolen again, even though it has a cage on it. There's a pile of them at Boulder Muffler, you know, this, you know, City of Boulder takes in tons of sales tags. But all these things are the planning board's purview because you have to deal with these financial issues. South Boulder Rec Center, you know, the rec center's needing infrastructure. Let the developer pay. Why should we as a taxpayer be asked to cover these things when we've got, you know, out-of-control theft? Catalytic converter costs thirty-seven hundred dollars. I got fifteen hundred backed, but it was a lot of work from the State Patrol because they have some funds for these things. But, you know.
Lynn, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and and the issues you've brought up. Does any, are there any other hands up?
None.
Okay, so uh we can move to dispositions and call-ups. There are two call-ups. Uh, the first is L U R two zero two-two dash zero 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 two-eight use review for a seven thousand square foot expansion of exterior restaurant use. Does anyone have, I think I have to actually read this. Expansion of exterior restaurant use at Avery Brewing, four-nine-one-oh Nautilus Court. Does anyone have a desire to call it up or questions about this project? Now.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, I just have a question. So it was unclear in reading the information if parking is being added? Is parking being added?
Um, no, no parking is being added. The original approval for the Avery Brewing Facility included um a twenty thousand square foot expansion that never happened. So they were granted a thirty-three percent parking reduction and then a deferral of fifty-two spaces. So when you, when you do all the math and Sarah actually asked a question about this prior to the meeting, when you do all the math, this actually comes to a reduction in the overall parking requirement from what was originally approved. Um, so they're still basically saying that they fall within the previously approved thirty-three percent parking reduction and parking deferral, which they do. That being said, a parking deferral gives the city the ability to um require them to build the deferred parking at any time. So if, if we determine that there's um that the parking demand is not being met after this expansion, um, we basically have the ability just to write a letter and say you have to provide the fifty-two deferred spaces. And that space is already set aside, um, so we know that they can provide it if need be. But as part of this, technically, they're still falling within what was previously approved for parking.
And Chandler, do we know if the current parking area is at capacity?
I haven't seen any complaints about parking. Um, it, according to the, to Avery, it seems to be working fine the way it is now.
Right. So, yeah, okay, I just was wondering um if that was going to put a burden or not on the existing parking, but I hear that there is a um, a pathway to increasing that parking. That sounds like be pretty easy to accomplish, so. That was my only question. I have no need to call this up. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question or a comment? All right, then, I do. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned about the, and I've raised this with Chandler in the agenda meeting, so he, he knows this is coming. I'm kind of concerned about the right now, the patio is uh to the west of the building and the building itself blocks the light and no, and some noise, I guess, from the Twin Lakes area where there's wildlife. When they create this other patio, it's going to be in front of the building and will be literally across the road from the Twin Lakes area. So I'm a little concerned about the impact of lights and noise and greater outdoor use. That's so, so close to this wildlife area. And I, I guess what I'm wondering is Chandler, if there's anything under nine dash two dash five E uh three or four that would give us any opening for a discussion of lighting controls or sound barrier, sound muffling, uh, that could be a discussion point if we did call it up.
Um, you know, I would probably have to defer to Hella in terms of the legal question there. You know, I think, like I said before, I think the, at least the way we were reviewing it in terms of impacts to the use of neighboring properties. Um, I was considering that in terms of impacts to use the neighboring properties by community members. So I think, yeah, Hella, if you have anything to say about impacts to wildlife in terms of use review criteria.
Yeah, the, under nine to fifteen E three that you mentioned, Sarah. Um, compatibility is analysis and analyzed, including whether the operating characteristics of the proposed development or changes to an existing development are such that the use would be reasonably compatible with and have minimal negative impacts on the use of nearby properties. So here, one of the nearby properties is an open space use um that I think has some environmental purposes and preserve space for wildlife. So I think there is an argument that you can consider those impacts under the use review criteria.
Okay, um, then I think I would like to call it up. I, I'm sorry to do that to an applicant, but I, I think it's worth um, at least exploring those issues. Um, and uh maybe nothing will come of it, but I do think it's worth exploring those issues. So I'd like to call it up. Uh, Laura.
Uh, just a comment that, um, since we are going to call this up, it seems like it would be useful to get the property manager. I don't know if that's an open space property or if that's city parks, but whoever manages that property to um talk about potential impacts and uh what concerns they might have. So, um, would it be uh possible to invite those folks to attend when we have this on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, now we'll go to the second call-up, uh, consideration for L U R two zero two-three dash zero 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 one four use review for a restaurant at nine-one-nine Pearl Street. Um, this is essentially a, um, Mama moving from Tenth Street onto Pearl Street. Um, does anyone have questions or comments? Okay, I think we are not going to call this up. Um, and Alex can go home, as can Chandler. Um, so thank you, thank you, Alex, for being here.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to come to our uh public hearing item, which is a introduction to the twenty twenty-four City of Boulder Energy Conservation Code element project and uh the way we're going to do this is staff is going, uh, first, um, Charles is going to introduce the staff to us because there's some new faces. Uh, then staff is going to give us the fifteen or twenty-minute presentation. Then we'll ask questions uh of staff, then we'll have the public participation if there's anyone who wants to speak. Uh, and then we will, since we're just being asked to give some feedback, then we'll utilize the three staff-related questions and um provide some feed, feedback that way. And so, Charles, take it away.
Great, thanks so much, Sarah. I'm, I'm really pleased to introduce this evening a few new staffers filling some really critical roles here at the city. Um, Josh Hanson is our newish Energy Code Compliance Principal Examiner. He'll be making the presentation this evening. And then um, also pleased to introduce Rob Adrianz, um, our new chief building official. So he's about three weeks on the job. And um, of course, Edward Stafford, our recovering interim chief building official who um helped start this work. So he's on the call this evening to uh to help answer any questions. So um, with that said, I'm happy to turn it over to the team.
Take it away, Josh.
Just one other introduction, Carolyn Elam with our Climate Initiative, Senior Manager in Climate Initiative, is also with us supporting this item tonight.
Carolyn, I'm so sorry I missed you. I didn't know you were on the call, but I'm so happy you're here. I apologize.
It's all fine, Charles. Thank you.
I just want to make sure she doesn't get off easy, so we'll make sure she's part of it. With that, we will turn it over to Josh for the presentation. All right, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we're good. Yep.
Good deal. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So, well, good evening, Planning Board members. My name is Josh Hanson. Um, as mentioned, I come from the Planning and Development Services Department here at the city and I'll be putting on the presentation today for our Energy Code Update Project that's going to be going on this year. As mentioned earlier, um, the, the agenda title really is more of an introduction to our development project. We recently have engaged our third-party consultant that's going to be helping us with this. Um, one of the interesting things to note is that the consultant that we're going to be working with actually helped us develop the twenty seventeen version of our energy code. Um, so they're really excited and we're really looking forward to working with them to carry this forward. Um, as some of you are aware, um, the City of Boulder has a uh carbon reduction emission or carbon emissions reduction of seventy percent we're targeting by twenty thirty as well as a net-zero carbon production or net-zero carbon uh city by twenty thirty-five and looking to be carbon positive by twenty forty. And so a way to look at something that's carbon positive is we have buildings and structures that actually remove more carbon dioxide than they produce. And so before we really get into this, I wanted to take a look back at kind of where and how we got here. And so wanted to really start by looking at our residential uh energy code program. Um, and so first of all, I, I know there's been some questions in the past as to really, you know, what consists of a residential building. And so, um, a residential building for our, our energy code is a one and two family dwelling, uh, townhomes and also R-three or R-four occupancies. And R-three occupancies, you can see those as dormitories, sororities, um, boarding houses, things of that nature. And then R-four typically going to be like an R-three, but with an additional requirement like assisted living or an alcohol awareness facility. Um, so the twenty seventeen Quebec really took a, took a big bite out of energy, I want to say. Um, and we focused on, as you can see from the chart to the right, looking at really homes that were greater than five thousand square feet and helping get those down to net zero. Um, when we looked at the twenty twenty uh energy code, uh, we really took a, a step down um, and look at actually requiring any homes that are greater than three thousand square feet to be net zero energy. Um, the one thing here to note is that the majority of the homes that we do see come through the City of Boulder um, that are new construction, uh, already are net zero due to this requirement. Um, some other things to really mention about the twenty twenty energy code that we, we introduced were these performance backstops which require um, certain items that can't be traded off when they're doing the energy modeling. Um, primarily, we're looking at the envelope items, so your wall insulation, attic insulation, window values. Making sure that we have firm numbers in place for those, um, to make sure that those can't be traded off. And you can look at other areas like lighting um, and equipment, mechanical things of that nature. Um, another thing this program introduced as well is we also got our solar-ready requirements as well as we looked at offsetting natural gas and fossil fuels for heating that's outside of the home or the dwelling unit. Um, so primarily, we think of that as like heating for pools. If there's any fossil fuel, we require renewable offsets for that and it's a hundred percent renewable offsets. And then the last thing that we really introduced here was EV-ready requirements for our single-family homes. Um, and so if you're looking for a little bit more information on this, um, this can be found in the, the packet that was provided on page forty-eight of the packet for the residential energy roadmap. So for the commercial energy roadmap, similarly to residential, I wanted to really define commercial as um, they take really kind of a, an ironic uh definition for it. And so they consider commercial buildings to be anything that's not residential. And so I kind of laugh about this because, um, you know, it's clear as mud, as we usually say. But um, the one thing to really remember and focus on here is that this also includes multifamily. So multifamily is viewed as a resident, as a commercial building. And the reason for that, the International Building Code governs commercial construction. The multifamily uh R-two occupancy is included under that uh umbrella under the IBC, therefore it follows commercial energy code. And so, the first iteration of our energy code here in Boulder, the twenty seventeen version was really based more back on an earlier version of an ASHRAE standard. And so ASHRAE is an alternative compliance path for the International Energy Code. And so this version we really looked at was the, the twenty-ten version of ASHRAE, which is actually the twenty-twelve International Energy Code. But instead of just taking it at face value and requiring um a baseline that is determined by the code, we wanted to really push the envelope and require an additional thirty percent savings. This code was also one of the first codes to really look at incorporating um solar-ready requirements, which are currently uh remain in our code, a, as I'll mention here in a second. Um, but wait, what those look at is requiring at least forty percent of the roof uh of the building to uh be available for solar uh in future uses. Um, so the twenty twenty Quebec looked to really build upon that with ASHRAE. And we actually upped the, the design metric from ASHRAE twenty-ten to twenty-sixteen. But we were also one of the first municipalities in the country to move to an EUI target for our, our commercial buildings. And so an EUI target is very similar, if you've heard of an uh ERI for residential, where it's an energy rating index. It's a energy use uh in, i- index for uh commercial buildings. And so it's similar to like mile, miles per gallon. I mean, it's really like energy used per square foot per year is really how we look at that and that's how it's defined. And so for the twenty twenty Quebec, what we did is we required an additional twenty-five, twenty percent savings for electric buildings and twenty-five percent savings for uh natural gas or mixed-fuel buildings. Um, this also incorporated the performance backstop similar to its residential counterpart. Um, one thing that's a little bit different too that we required and we, we, we're going to be looking at carrying forward is uh, we require a five percent solar offset of the energy use in commercial buildings and this is a mandatory requirement and not traded. Um, and then the last thing, the twenty twenty uh Quebec really did was we built on um, additional EV capable requirements, ready requirements and then EVSC uh full requirements. And so more information on this uh can be found in the packet as well on page forty-nine. So, to give kind of a quick snapshot of, of the direction that we're going with this project, I, I wanted to lay out just a quick rough kind of timeline for this as we're really early on in the project, as I mentioned. Um, but, so tonight we're having our meeting with the planning board as well as the public hearing in. Um, tomorrow night, we have our meeting with the Environmental Advisory Board and then later this month with the city council on a study session. Um, after that, we're going to be looking at engaging stakeholders in the community to get their feedback. Um, because at the end of the day, really, this code's going to be our code and their code. Um, and then also, we're going to look at drafting the code and then representing it back to the planning board as well as the other boards, uh, once it's available. Um, and then by November, we're really shooting to have our initial public reading um with the updated energy code. And so, to really get into kind of why we're all here is, you know, what are the areas of focus that we're really looking at on this project? And so the first three areas I wanted to touch on really deal with our performance targets is the City of Boulder is, you know, uh increasingly looking to improve our efficiency requirements and our, our energy savings. And so these first two areas look at kind of continuing that pathway as we look to kind of reduce our energy usage and down to net zero. Um, but the second part of this, really, the, the last three sections are, are kind of going a little bit further than just looking at energy usage and really looking at um electrification and, and natural gas, which at the end of the day looks at carbon reduction. Um, and we'll, we'll discuss more about the embodied piece as well. So the first piece here really to dive into is our performance target updates. Um, and so this is really looking at kind of what we're going to be going into with our, with this project and what we're looking to achieve, at least with our proposed updates. And so on the residential front, um, we currently, as mentioned, we require three thousand square foot and larger to be net zero. Um, and so we're looking to keep that there, you know, we're, we're in consideration of moving it, uh, if it deems necessary or if with, through the research that's done, if it, if it makes sense to move it. But as mentioned earlier, the majority of the homes that are new builds in, in Denver have to meet this requirement due to the size. Another thing we're really looking at doing is revamping the, the targets and the values for homes that are less than three thousand square feet. Um, we're really going to be looking at, you know, we, we, we have access to the racial equity tool and some of the other equity tools to um, to tie in and really look at this and kind of analyze this to make sure that everyone has access to energy efficiency and not the folks that can just afford it. Um, on the commercial front, we have three pathways through energy code uh on, on the performance side. We do have prescriptive requirements, same with residential, that's based off of, if, if the building is so, or the, on commercial, if the valuation is less than five hundred thousand dollars, you're able to go perform or prescriptive and follow the recipe in the book. And then residential is if it's five hundred square feet or less. So in commercial, our primary focus on most of our projects is really the performance path. And there are three pathways through performance. And so this model baseline path is usually what we think of and what we talk about when we talk about the twenty-five or, excuse me, twenty to twenty-five percent energy reduction. Um, and so what we're really looking at here is you, you model the building, you know what your target is. We have to show an additional savings above that because Boulder requires twenty to twenty-five percent savings. And so that's really where you, you get that target. And so what we're going to be doing there is analyzing it and seeing does it, you know, do we need to update this target? Of course, we need to update this target. We're looking to to increase our energy efficiency as the City of Boulder. Um, but also look at changing uh possibly the baseline that it's measured against, which is currently the ASHRAE twenty sixteen uh baseline. Uh, another path which you can kind of see to the left here in the boxes is our fixed baseline path. So there's, this is really more of a static target. And so you have uh the, the buildings on the left that are in blue are the, the current buildings that we have in our energy code. And as you can see under the twenty twenty Quebec column, those are the targets that they have to be under when they model these buildings. So they're really not having to model, you know, a separate building and then look at the performance and, and measure it against that. Here, you just go in, you find a static number and you know you have to be below that number. The downside to this path currently is that we have limitations on the, the uh building types that are in our code currently. So there's only six building types. And so we're looking at adjusting that to allow for more buildings. I threw in some additional um ideas below that are, that are available uh in the market through like NBI, which is the New Buildings Institute and some of those other programs that actually do uh some of the research on this. So there are additional EUI targets that can be used. Um, we just.
Josh, it's like we have a question. Oh.
Yeah, oh. What, are you talking about me or are you talking about somebody else?
Oh, no, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm confused. The numbers, the EUI performance targets between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. Oh, the twenty twenty numbers are smaller, so they represent less consumption?
Still less energy use. Yeah, so less energy use, yep, over the square foot of the building, yeah. So if you see like.
Not, not measuring reduction from the two thousand five baseline but measuring less consumption, less energy consumption.
So, yes, so what we're looking at, so if you, so don't look at the twenty seventeen column. So basically, a medium office building would be required to have, to have an EUI of twenty-three, which would basically look at um, it's your energy usage across the square footage of the building. And so that would be, you know, it'd be, um, I was looking at one the other day and I'm trying to think of the top, the, the, the values on it. Um, but what we're really, it, it's a measurement kind of over that square footage during that year. And so that's why the, the, you know, it's twenty-three and so we're going to get smaller because of the energy use index, we want it to get smaller. So you're using less energy across the square footage of the building.
Okay, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong. It's measured in K, um, KB to you.
Yeah, but yeah, KB to you per square foot per year. Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I, I didn't know what we were measuring, but it was getting smaller, but I wasn't sure how that was better, so.
No, thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, so KB to you, which, you know, its counterpart is KWH, which is the kilowatt hours. Yeah, so thank you for that. Um, great question too. So, so we've got those two.
And it looks like Kurt has a question.
Carolyn, why don't you let me?
Carolyn, why don't you let me manage the meeting, please? Kurt, go ahead, please.
Sorry, just a quick follow up on that. So this is measuring. K thousand B T U of, so that's just heating and cooling?
So no, what they do is they incorporate lighting and basically there's other. So the Ashray standard has certain processes that are. Uh, regulated through that program like HVAC lighting, service water, heating, things of that nature. And so all of that ends up getting factored into the E U I targets. It's just kind of like I was mentioning earlier to Mark, it's that you have K B to use a target, you can also use kilowatt hours a target. And so what you can do is you can convert those back and forth between those energy use types to get them the same energy to be able to add them together to get the usage.
But it's predictive, right? It's not measuring all the TVs you plug in or.
Correct. There's, there's an unregulated load that's, that's factored into that as well. Um, that, that is when they do the calculation. They have the calculation for the regulated loads, which is basically what Ashray lays out for you to model and how to model. But there's unregulated loads, like you mentioned, some plug loads, appliances are not appliances, but like computers, things of that nature that maybe additional plugs in. And so. They, it factors that into the calculation. Um, but that is something else that actually uh I didn't touch on earlier, but that's another study that we're looking at is some unregulated plug loads and. How to address those really as we look at getting to net zero. So.
Okay, thank you.
No, not a problem.
Are there any other questions at this time? All right, Josh, go ahead.
Not a problem anytime. Thank you very much. Um, so we mentioned the first two paths for the commercial energy code and the last path. Which I, I'd love to joke that it's our most popular path, but uh unfortunately we haven't had anyone go through it yet. Um, but it's our measured performance outcome path. And so this is, I think, similar um to what Kirk was mentioning earlier to where. This is actually based off of how the building performs. So the building gets built. Within a year of construction, you would re- record all your energy usage and then you would model the building to see how it actually would, should perform. And then where those two would marry into it would be actually your, your performance outcome on this. And so. Since we haven't really seen any buildings go through this path currently in the city, um, we're looking at actually requiring this for uh. You know, for depending on the building type to really start getting more, more data and uh more of an analysis on, on this path and kind of buildings. Um, the commercial buildings at least. Uh, let's see. So the second part I wanted to, to dive into a little bit here is. Um, something that we're looking at as a consideration is an alternative path on the energy, on the residential front. And so it's the D O E zero energy ready home option. Um, and so this program has been around for, I want to say what, twenty twenty three now. So for the past ten years, there's about thirty thousand homes that have been certified to it across the country. Um, this program has a lot of really good benefits. Um, so not only are you getting a home that's basically zero energy ready. It takes you to the point of, of solar installation without doing the solar installation, hence the, the ready aspect of it. Um, but some key things to really note about this program is it's grounded in Energy Star New Home Certification. Um, and so the real, the real benefit to this new three point two version of the program. Um, it has backstops that are in the twenty twenty one I E C C. Um, it also requires Energy Star windows as well as Energy Star appliance to help with the energy uh energies reduction. Um, it also requires an EPA's indoor air plus certification. So not only are you getting an efficient home, but also a, a healthy home really for, for your family. Um, this, this program has some uh, some different caveats than other programs do. And so for like this one here, you have to have the HVAC system entirely inside the thermal envelope. So typically if you see. Some uh air handlers maybe in an attic or a crawl space, that has to be taken into consideration if you're, if you're doing this program. You have to make sure that it remains in the thermal envelope of the building. Um, this was one of the first programs that actually introduced the P V ready checklist. Um, and that is a requirement for this uh certification. And then the last piece is they really also introduced E V ready and then heat pump and water space heating ready requirements that are built into this, this. Uh, basically an elective option through energy code. Um, the real reason I wanted to also bring this to everyone's attention is. There are some good incentives that are available through this program to help really incentivize homeowners to consider looking at this and not just. You know, getting an energy efficient home, but a healthy home as well. Um, the Inflation Reduction Act that was released last year. Um, put out a couple of uh, a couple of incentives that were available. One of them that comes to the top of my mind is the forty five L tax credit. And it's actually going to be available through the next ten years. Um, and for a single family home, I believe it's, this program yields with the certification about five thousand dollars per single family home. The key thing to, to think about too on this is that can also be reflected into multifamily as well. Now, the payout's not as high, but you get paid per unit um for that. Uh, for the certification on multifamily projects as well. So. Um, so we just touched on the first two areas of, of interest really with our, our update to energy code, which really focused on kind of our performance targets. And tightening those down for our energy savings for our, our goal with the city. Um, the next three areas are really going to pull everything, I'd say, full circle as we look at electrification, which is really the hot button topic that's, that's being talked about. All over the country as well as looking a hundred percent uh offset for our natural gas usage. Um, as well as kind of building everything into the final piece of, of carbon reduction. And so um. Really with electrification, what we were considering is for new construction and level four alterations. Um, to look at all electric space and water heating as the requirement. And then also look at having electric ready for other appliances like stoves. Um, for anyone that's wondering, a level four alteration is going to be, think of it as an alteration. That's the last step before you hit new construction. So that's why it's included up there with construction. So it's, it's a really heavy major alteration. Um, the next item I wanted to mention is our level three alterations. And so with this level, it's not as. Intensive as a level four alteration, but what we're looking to do here really is, is to really encourage electric ready and to help incentivize folks to, to consider moving this way. And so through that, what we would do is similarly to the way we have it currently written for our uh, all, our alterations. We provide um some allowances above the target to, to understand that, you know, with alterations. This is the hand that you're dealt. This is what you have to deal with. With this, um, what we're trying to do is. Give you a more lenient target. That way it helps kind of offset any additional costs that might be incurred through going electric ready, which should be really very minimal. Um, some other areas that I wanted to mention too that we're looking at is E V charging requirements. Um, last Thursday, the state released its model. Electric ready and solar ready codes and the city of Boulder is uh about ninety five percent in alignment with it already. Um, the real area that it's going to provide a minimal impact, I would say, is our multifamily uh. Uh, area. And so basically what it's doing there is. It's going to up the ante from our current requirement of ten percent for E V ready to fifteen percent for E V ready. That's the real, the real difference. Um, it introduces another uh E V capable light section as well. Um, but with us, we're really going to be kind of looking at that and using that as a springboard to, to enhance those requirements and, and. You know, and uh move the needle forward with our E V requirements in the city. Uh, another aspect too that I wanted to mention is becoming more and more prevalent across the city is electric bike charging. And so the real focus here was to look at. Um, multifamily and looking kind of incorporating some requirements there. To help encourage uh electric bike charging. And so. Uh, a one, a couple of things I wanted to, to mention before we switch off this slide is, you know, as we consider and think about this electric ready space and water heating. Um, Crested Butte here in the city or in the state of Colorado is actually the first uh city to require all electric new construction for projects. And as some of you might be aware, uh Denver is going to be following close behind as starting January first, twenty twenty four. New commercial and multifamily constructions are no longer going to allow natural gas furnaces or water heating. Um, so just some things to think about as we kind of start moving through this and really talking about carbon reductions. Um, for anyone that's more interested in, in more information on this, the packet that was provided. You can check out page fifty one under the title for natural gas to get a little bit more information on this background. Um, so part four here really deals with our, our uh natural gas offset. And so. With the starting in residential, we currently require this. So anything that's heating outside of the dwelling unit or the. Uh, the home is going to require a hundred percent offset if it's a fossil fuel or natural gas. Um, if you use a heat pump, uh, heat pump style uh equipment. What's going to be required is to show compliance that yes, the heat pump can handle the load that's, that's going to be required by the city. And so with this update, what we really want to do is kind of provide more guidance. Um, I can say in the past months with I've been with the city, we've seen more and more things that come in that are going to be heating out, outdoors. And just kind of more uh questions on how to handle this, how to. Address like electric resistance heating in certain areas or fire pits or saunas of things of that nature and just help provide more guidance on, on that aspect. Um, and how to do those calculations to ensure they're in compliance. On the commercial front, we really didn't have anything built in for any uh, uh, any offsets other than our normal. Um, five percent energy offset that we require just for the energy usage of the building. Um, something that we've really considered and are looking at uh requiring is um. For mixed fuel buildings, uh, having a hundred percent of the natural gas use, if it's going to be used to be offset. Um, so to help, to help push the envelope as we look at this carbon reduction. Um, and really um. You know, push the needle, no pun intended. Um, so. Um, the last piece here that I wanted to, to really touch on that really brings everything full circle is. Just this idea of carbon reduction and what we're really looking at and leapfrogging the idea of this, this net zero energy to really focusing on. The, the, the elephant in the room, which is, which is carbon. And so for anyone that's not familiar, when we refer to the term carbon, we're not referring to the uh periodic table version of it. We're really referring to carbon dioxide. And so some interesting things to note here, um, buildings actually account for about thirty nine percent of greenhouse gases uh of. That basically are, are emitted from a, a carbon dioxide. And so a quarter of that actually comes from embodied carbon that we're going to be discussing here in a second. Um, but quick to, to give you guys a quick understanding of it, there's two types of carbon. We have operational carbon as well as embodied carbon. The easiest way to, to think about this is operational carbon is really going to be admitted. Once the building is built. You turn it over, it goes into operation, management processes, your day to day work. That's the operational carbon and the carbon dioxide that's emitted just from your normal day to day operations. On the embodied carbon front, it's really from manufacturer extraction through the construction process up to. Think of it as the final turnover to the, the building owner. So it's all of the embodied carbon throughout that process. Through recent studies, um, there are some categories that tend to yield more bang for your buck when you're really looking at a bo- uh embodied carbon reduction. And I'd really kind of look at those first kind of four categories that are listed up here. Um, primarily the main one that everyone really thinks about is optimizing our concrete mix to help really reduce. Um, and help in train some carbon dioxide and to help. Um. To help kind of we'll get where we are with our car, our embodied carbon reduction targets. And so the other two pieces is really, um, you know, looking at rebar as well as insulation. And so I think. You know, as we move forward with this, these could be areas that would be up for consideration possibly as we look at moving. Um, the needle on this embodied carbon reduction is maybe requiring. Um, you know, a, a set, some, you know, items from certain categories to meet this reduction. Um, there are tools in the market that can help. Um. Guide folks on the carbon, carbon, you know, amount of carbon and things. And so the two tools I think of is there's a carbon rating tool that's very similar to what we require for our energy uh rating index on our, our single family homes. Um, and then also in the multifamily realm is a uh life cycle assessment that can be performed. And so the life cycle assessment for anyone that's familiar is basically an analysis. Of the environmental impact of that building, its processes, the materials that are being uh, that are in it. Um, over the useful life of the building. And so it really gives you a, a better understanding of how these buildings are performing. Um. And impacting the environment, excuse me. So if you're looking for any additional information on this, you can check out page fifty four of the packet. And it should be under the title for embodied carbon. So. Next steps really for us here is um to really. Look at the feedback and, and recommendations that we can get from the board and, and uh the boards that we're going to be discussing uh just. Putting this presentation to as well as city council. Um, engaging stakeholders in the community to get their, their feelings on everything and their feedback. Um, as at the end of the day, as I mentioned, this really is going to be their code. Um, incorporate all of that feedback and recommendations as we look at drafting. Uh, the Quebec. And so I believe the, the rough draft for residential is going to be around Septemberish. And then October is going to be closer to where we have the rough draft, I want to say for commercial. Um. Once we have that, we want to get back with the planning board, environmental advisory board as well as city council. Um, and get their review and buy in and blessing on the items that we've chosen to help update. And then ideally, we're looking for the public reading to be in November of, of this year. And so. As I wrap this up, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions really for consideration. And so um, the first question is. You know, with what you've seen on this presentation, do you agree with these areas that we're proposing to update in the twenty twenty four Kobe? And then also. Is there anything that we're leaving out that you feel real strongly that we should include or at least consider including in this? And then lastly. With me being a little bit newer to the city, I'd really um love some feedback on what your recommendations would be. With your community engagement and strategies and what's worked in the past on a project like this. And. That is all I have. So I yield the floor and thank you everyone for this opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Josh. That was very interesting. And I know that we have. Uh. All the board members who are here today are very interested in this topic. So I know people will have questions. Um, so if you don't mind raising your hands and then we will go to, these are. Information only questions will provide feedback and comments. Um, after uh public comments. So this is for question, questions you have for Josh or Carolyn. Really? No question? Oh, yeah, there we go. Thanks. Uh, Laura, Laura, then Kurt.
I, I figured that M L and Kurt and Mark would have questions, so I was hanging back, but I'll go first. Um. My first question, this comes from the memo. And I just don't understand it. It's my ignorance, so I'm hoping that someone can help me understand this. It says, staff proposes to transition from a net zero energy focus to a net zero greenhouse gas focus. That considers grid emissions reductions when imposing requirements on projects. Could you please explain what that means? And what is significant about changing from a net zero energy focus to a net zero greenhouse gas focus? Why is that preferred?
So basically what it, so the way to really look at it, I, I want to try to think about how to, to explain it without getting too much in the grass for you. Um, so net zero, we're looking really at the focus is energy. And so when we look at net, net car or. Net zero carbon, what we're doing is you're basically leapfrogging just energy and you're looking at carbon as a whole, which factors in. Like I mentioned, the embodied carbon aspect, which is basically innate carbon dioxide that's in materials. And so. Energy reduction factors into carbon reduction. And so it's kind of a part to a whole type of thing is a way to kind of look at it uh. In, in a, in a nutshell, and I'm trying to think of an easy way to kind of explain it, if that makes sense to where like. Energy reduction, like if you did a, a thirty percent savings on a building, um, you may not. Uh, you, you're, 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 you're delivering on part of the, you know, you're, you're meeting the requirement for the operational carbon piece. And so. That thirty percent reduction's great, but there's still carbon that's out there. And so that's why we're, we're kind of leapfrogging. Uh, energy reduction to also focus on this, focus on this carbon reduction. So.
And, and Josh, maybe if I can weigh in just a little bit on this one as well. I think um Laura is. As you know, with our, our roadmap, we were really um on a trajectory where you produce as much energy as you use um. On site at the building and that was really um. Motivated a lot by where our grid emissions were uh when we first laid out that roadmap. We're now on a trajectory to be somewhere um over eighty percent renewables on the grid by our twenty thirty timeframe. And we want to kind of credit the fact that we're going to have a low emission grid and not necessarily drive as much investment into. Um, renewable generation to offset energy use within the, the buildings. Um, we're running into um constraints. As we move to um higher density. Structures, smaller homes with different lot orientations. So as we think about our net zero code where we were crying as much solar onsite as the building used. Um, we're driving people to have to purchase offsite options, which is not necessarily what we're, we're trying to accomplish. So we're. Just thinking about it a little bit different in terms of. Like what are we already getting um through clean electricity and what's the balance that we need to offset? Did that answer your question a little bit? Is it still clear as mud?
I think so. It sounds like there's two things that this accomplishes. And, and when you say net zero greenhouse gas. You're talking about carbon and you're talking about not only operational carbon, but you're talking about embodied carbon. And so. This focus allows you to look at that embodied carbon piece and it also. Um, you know, it, it makes intuitive sense that if our grid is generating cleaner energy, you know, through renewables. There's. Uh, less need to get renewable generation onsite through solar panels and things like that. Okay, I think I understand that. Thank you. That was my first question. Um. Second question. Um, you talked about electric bike charging. Uh, and I'm curious, just again, I'm ignorant here. My personal experience with electric bikes is that the batteries come off and you can charge it in any outlet in your house. Is there, are there a lot of models of electric bikes? Do we expect a lot of the electric bikes of the future to be integrated batteries that you cannot? Take off the bike? Like, why do we need to focus on electric bike charging?
So. This was something that uh was brought to my attention, at least coming to the city was. You know, there was more of a focus on uh multimodal transportation. So. Um, you know, we, we saw the scooters and we saw kind of the problems and the, the learning curve of the scooters. And so. Um, we're seeing more and more of these bike chargers that are throughout the city. And so I. I honestly, as of this moment, we haven't done enough research to really be able to provide a good answer, but I can get back to you on it. Um, it, it, just with some more data and some more information behind the different options for the bike chargers and things of that nature. And and if we do look at uh putting that into code, you know, why? You know, what's our approach behind it and how we're gonna um? Yeah. And what, what's really the intent behind it and make sure that it's, it, you know, it meets the requirements of what we're after. Cause at the end of the day, we may look into it and decide that, you know what, this really isn't gonna be the best bang for our buck and we might move a different direction, but.
Okay, thank you. I would just hate to see us require some kind of infrastructure that doesn't keep up with the changes in technology on electric bikes.
No, definitely. Thank you for that feedback.
Sure. Um, similarly with the natural gas uses, um, personal experience of living in a large multifamily complex where the gas usage was not individually metered. And so individuals had no incentive to conserve because it was just paid uh in a lump through the HOA, you didn't see your gas bill. So people would buy like the um gas heaters for their patio, like you would see in a restaurant. People would leave their gas fireplace on for atmosphere, like there was just huge amounts of waste of gas because you didn't see your bill. Is that still possible in the city that, that new multi-fuel buildings are not individually metered? Because I think that might be something to change if that is still possible.
So, so I can say that the buildings are do require to be metered, uh, or the dwelling units are required to be metered, individually metered. And so that's actually written into the energy code uh under the commercial code. So.
Okay, great. It's good to know that that is a thing of the past. I don't know if it's possible to retrofit for that, but that's, I think, a huge source of, of gas waste. Uh, I did want to ask a question around the social equity, social inequity impacts. Um, and I think this is a hard question. I, I appreciate that you're looking at it from the lens of we want to make sure that everybody in the city, regardless of income, has access to uh energy efficiency. But of course, we all know that requiring energy efficiency makes new construction more expensive. And so, for example, with our affordable housing funds, more expensive construction means we can construct less of it. And I know that, um, well, on page forty seven, you, there's a statement that says, rather than setting less stringent requirements for smaller homes or commercial projects, there's opportunity to leverage federal, state and local investment to advance equity priorities without sacrificing building performance. So that says to me that you don't want to, for example, give a break to affordable housing or multifamily housing and say you have less stringent requirements so that it's less expensive, but that there's some other opportunity that you're seeing to advance equity priorities without giving a break on the energy efficiency requirements. Can you say more about that?
So, no, definitely. And so that was, that was one of the, the main uh parts of the, the part two really with the, the DOE zero energy ready home. And so there are incentives that are available out there to help offset the cost of that. Um, when, when looking at multifamily, if I remember correctly, um, it sets the target at I want to say it was either five hundred or a thousand dollars a unit um for multifamily that pursues DOE zero energy ready. And it doesn't cap the, the number of units on site. Um, but to your point, I think with regards to affordable housing and multifamily, I think that's something that we could look at. Um, and definitely we'll dig into and see if it, you know, like you said, to help promote affordable housing, I think that it would be a very valuable for us to look at that and see if there's any trade offs that might make sense to help um really, really push that, that uh in the city here. So.
Okay, I, I have a comment about that, but I'll save that for the comments, but that, that was my question. I think that's all for my questions.
Okay, great. I'm just so we can get uh do all around the bend and, all right, Kurt, then Mark, then ML.
Uh, okay. Thank you, Laura. Yeah, a couple of those questions with the same ones that I had. One, I, I have some questions about this distinction between the residential and commercial. So first of all, everything is classified as either residential or commercial. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so a duplex, for example, would be residential. But a triplex would be commercial, is that right?
I'm trying to think of the definition because it depends on the, the common wall typically. But no, so.
Town home or a um, or if it was a apartment type, but if it was a typical triplex for the town home, then it would be residential.
Yeah, exactly. That's, yeah.
Wait, so a triplex would be residential?
Yes, if it's a town home, if it's got a firewall that goes from the foundation all the way to the ceiling, that, that's re- governed by the residential code, not by the commercial code.
Okay, but what if it's not a townhouse, it's a townhome, it's just a, it's a triplex, you know, apartment building, for example?
If it's an apartment building, it would be regulated by the commercial code.
Yeah. If it's, if it's like a triplex that are three units attached to each other, we would look at that as single family.
Okay. What if it's a, a stacked duplex, for example? So there's no firewall, but it's two units, one above the other. Would that be residential or?
I mean, per, in that scenario, um, and they're, they don't have a co- any common area, it would just have two entrances to the front of it. I would look at that almost as residential because it's two units. I mean, we have the flexibility to, to prove to, we, I've actually had folks ask if we can model um multifamily projects using the ERI path. And so they can do it. Um, but with the way that the commercial program is built, it's, it's, you're able to model the building as a whole versus individual units unitarily. And so it just becomes burdensome for multifamily to really do the, the hers index path. Um, and so I, I've actually, I've worked outside of Colorado where we do see R two occupancies, three stories and down that are um residential. And so the issue that we run into typically that we've seen is when you get into those scenarios and you have these three story buildings that are residential, you've got four story buildings that are commercial, it gets really muddy and really messy. And so we've seen a lot more municipalities moving to require or moving just the needle to where R two occupancies are no longer, uh, even if it's three stories down or no longer included in the residential, they're included under commercial. So.
Okay, well, that was sort of where I was going with this. I'm just trying to compare if you have, say, the same size building and it's divided up into two units and therefore it's residential or it's divided up into three units and therefore it's commercial, if that is the, the way it would be classified, which one would have higher? How, how would the energy requirements compare between those two? Because it seems we have these two very different metric systems, right, for residential and commercial. And I'm just trying to see, like, is one way more stringent than the other?
So, so I would say currently, one thing I would say is that I would, our residential is going to be more stringent because we already require net zero on it. And so by that piece, let alone i- i- it's more stringent, especially for new construction, since that's what we see the majority of that comes in. That is new construction is going to be over three thousand square feet and we require net zero. And so with the commercial code, it's, it's getting more and more stringent, as you saw on the, the slide previously. A lot of those values are in the third, like lower thirties and, you know, mid to lower twenties. And so we're moving the needle down further and further to net zero. Um, but the other piece too is that we've moved to this EUI target that we have now. And so it's very similar to what we do in residential, but it's hard to really quantify the two because with, with commercial, you have different systems that can be used versus residential. And so it's really not apples to apples to say that, you know, one's meeting the requirement and the other one's not. But I can say that if we were to put them next to each other right now, our residential program is going to be a little bit more stringent just because it does require net zero. So.
I think, Josh, from a performance standpoint, we can take a, a note to, to analyze that though. Um, to just look on a square footage basis, because I, I think it's a a good question about how comparable they are. I agree with Josh. I think they're, they're very close, if not so identical in terms of envelope and lighting, power density and other requirements, but we can definitely do that analysis.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, one other sort of detailed question on page forty nine of the memo. You talk about the thresholds uh where you, you, you have to meet these, this ERI pathway for new homes larger than five hundred square feet or additions greater than a thousand square feet. And that seemed odd to me because it seemed just intuitively, it seemed like you would want to be more stringent on additions because presumably you're ending up with a larger house in the long, in, you know, after the addition is done than a five hundred square foot ADU, for example. So I'm, I'm, if you, can you just understand the thinking behind five hundred square feet being the threshold for a, just an individual house and a thousand square feet being the threshold for an addition?
So Carolyn, do you know a little bit of that backstory? Because I wasn't around that far back, sorry.
Yeah, and if you, if correct if I run, Josh, I think when we're, we're adding an addition, we're, we're looking at the entirety of the, the structure.
Yes.
Um, and so it's acknowledging that you're starting with a, a poor performing structure to begin with and adding addition and having to bring it all together in an integrated way. And so that's where the thousand came in versus a freestanding five hundred square foot structure.
I see. So if you had, if you've got a four thousand square foot house and you add and a thousand, a thousand square foot addition, the, the entire house then has to meet this requirement?
Okay, yeah, or, or a thirty, if it's a thirty percent, I'd have to look at, or a thirty percent overall improvement. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of different paths on it. But yeah, that's basically if it's a level three alteration where fifty percent, well, if it's, sorry, this is addition. So yes, so let to, to what Carolyn said, it would be required to have a hers of fifty or less or to show thirty percent savings from the, the initial building before the addition was added. And so you still have to show the addition with, with that building shows a reduction in the energy use. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then one last question, which you, you may not have numbers for this, but I was just thinking about, so we're very focused on new buildings, right? And we don't, none of this deals with existing buildings. We have smart regs that deals with existing rental buildings, but that's really all. So I'm wondering if you have or we have data on the, basically the building turnover rate. So like if, if this went into effect today, what fraction of the buildings that existed in Boulder in, say, twenty thirty five would be new buildings that, that this would do apply to? And what fraction would be existing buildings? And I, I realize, you know, eh, we would only have estimates, but I'm just trying to get a feel for like, how much of the building stock are we actually affecting in any near term, term timeframe with this?
So, so I, I, we did talk a lot about new construction in that um in the presentation, but the intent there is to, to really focus on new construction as well as alterations and additions and looking at updating those and addressing those um those sections at least. We're not going to leave those out at all by any means, because to your point, really, this, that's really what we see, the majority of what we see come in is a lot of tenant infills. You know, it's a lot of existing buildings that are getting repurposed and reused versus new construction. Um, and so I, at this moment, I can't really speak to that point. Um, but I can definitely do some research and get back to you on it. So.
Yeah, I feel like it's a one percent per year on residential.
Okay, okay, that's.
Of, 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 of new homes versus existing buildings.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. All right, Mark and then ML.
Thank you. Um, so I, I'm struggling a little bit because of, this is such a um, broad effort and based on the interrelated nature of things, I'm having a hard time separating questions from commentary, but I'm going to do my best. Um, the first one is the probably the broadest and maybe I'm just not understanding, but how will this, once it's adopted, be integrated into our building code, our site review process, our TDM plans? Is this another layer of code, a, a, a separate section of code? Or does it dissolve and get melded into building and planning code?
So I know that recently I actually looked at the site review criteria that was updated and I know that we've addressed the items at least with the site review criteria. Um, as to the actual process on how it would overlay with the other departments and with zoning and planning with everything and kind of how it would really incorporate to that. Um, Carolyn or Edward, do you think you might be able to speak a little bit more to that?
I can certainly speak to that. And then Carolyn, you can follow up.
Please, I'm ready.
Mark, the way this currently is actually is a component of the building code, its own piece. So the building code is actually made up of a variety of different pieces. You've got the the residential code, the international building code, you got the plumbing code, the mechanical code. Actually, there, the books will fill a whole bookshelf of all the pieces. This is one of those books for energy conservation. Um, it is then intended to apply to any and all construction, depending on the triggers that are pla- present across the city, independent of whether a project was uh in site review, was a by right project, any of those items, that's an, it, it does not differentiate. So it will apply again, using the triggers regardless of the land use entitlement process that a project went through. Um, intent being to be as broad as we can um with this and recognizing we don't really want to incentivize not going or going through a certain land use process over meeting some of these goals that relates to our energy consumption, energy conservation, and of course, ultimately greenhouse gas. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, no, that, that, that does. It, it does seem, um, as if, if I put myself in a designer's uh shoes, an architect, a designer, planner, that it, it begs the question, why I look at parking requirements or your, your suggested parking requirements and electrification requirements and so forth, and how that relates to how we go about uh approving projects under our current site review process or modified site review process, et cetera. And I think about the Department of Community Vitality dealing with parking, I think about transportation dealing with parking, uh, planning. And anyway, it, it's, um, it's, 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 it's surprising to me that uh, we continue to add separate components and books on the shelf rather than a broader integrated view. I, I'm not saying this isn't fantastic work and the goals aren't admirable, but uh, I think it's uh, uh, it's a challenge for people to uh to make sure they've, they've looked at all the books. So.
Certainly.
Yeah. Um, how did you come up with the, for a commercial building? Five percent on page forty nine, five percent of the buildings, uh, I, I don't know if that's greenhouse gas or energy consumption coming from solar. So why, why five percent?
So I want to say this, so this actually came from the, the earlier twenty twenty code that we were currently in um as a mandatory requirement. And so like you, it's, it's a five percent um of the energy use of the building needs to be offset with solar is the, what the requirement is. Um, and, and I think Carolyn might have been around at the time when they did the update with the code and might be able to speak a little bit more to why it was set at five percent. My, my guess is some research was probably done behind the scenes with regards to those commercial buildings. And this was something that um really gets our foot in the door with requiring solar on projects and five percent was probably a minimal ask to really get people's feet wet on just the solar aspect of these buildings. Is that about around the lines, Carolyn?
Yeah, and it, it's, um, yeah, as you mentioned, Josh, we had solar ready requirements, but we wanted to make sure that we were actually getting solar actually installed on these buildings and five percent was really, I'll call it a cost based um number. It's not any meaningful thing in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, like there wasn't a calculation to say we need five percent to offset, but rather it was the incremental cost of construction that helped inform the five percent with the idea that most projects are actually installing more to meet the other requirements, to meet the performance requirements. Anyway, we're trying to get them over that hurdle of at least installing some that, that was the rationale behind it.
Um, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to that with a, with a comment by sell another question related. So the way, um, as a commercial building owner with a solar system on there, Excel under the PUC says I can't sell electricity to my tenants. I have to give it away. I have to um include it in their rent. I, I have to jump through these funny hoops and you know, and so I do that because I'm not violating Excel. I want you to know that. So um, has there been a move on the part of the city or coalition of cities so that as a commercial building owner makes an attempt to um reduce their ongoing building, their ongoing emissions that they can actually? that they can actually monetize and and benefit their tenant and benefit themselves versus right now. It's very hard if you if you adhere to the uh, letter of the PUC in Excel. I I have to give it away. Any any thoughts on that?
Yes, so I'm gonna get, I don't have the bill number on top of my head, and in twenty twenty one, Senator Fender um, put through a successful bill that um, changed some of the the requirements around solar net metering, and that included a um, provision for a master meter, multi-tenant, multi-unit consideration. That rulemaking has been going on at the commission. Um, and I think should be close to being finalized. Um, the city was party to that and provided feedback. I think where it was standing is there's a limit, I think, on how much you can monetize, but no longer restricts your ability to monetize some of that benefit and allows you to credit the net metering to the individual tenants in the property. So there has been progress in that regard. It until implemented, we won't know if it's really addressing all of the issues, but certainly there's been progress.
Great, that's good to know. Thank you. Okay, last one. On page fifty two, uh, you focus on onsite production. And um, my question is, my understanding is onsite production might make us feel good about our building or our community. But if from the efficiency standpoint, my understanding is many times centralized offsite production can be far more efficient and more cost effective. Why have we focused on onsite production? And and in fact, how is that defined? Uh, you know, I look at IBM, uh, the IBM plant. Is that onsite? Is that offsite? Is that, you know, so help me understand what the focus is, why the focus on onsite production?
So there's a couple of things that I can comment on there. So if um, again, with the origination of the the roadmap and and our strategies, we we wanted to minimize how much of dirty sources of energy were used by the building. Um, so the idea of not using the grid mix, but rather producing as much as you could on site. There's also um, resilience benefits, job benefits, and other other values that are supported by that. This doesn't preclude uh, large offsite systems, but one of the things we find is on the sick residential as an example, we're requiring uh, you know, three thousand square foot building that might be oriented um and shaded based on 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 the lot location, um, and they can maybe put enough solar on there to do fifty percent of their energy need, and they have to get another fifty percent offsite. There are, there aren't options for them out there. They can't go to solar gardens that there there aren't any that are taking subscribers. Um, it's it's becoming more challenging, and so there's all these administrative things. And so that's why you're seeing that shift away from trying to get to a hundred percent onsite. But still allowing um, all of those considerations to come into play. And yes, uh, the IBM system is technically a a net metered system.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Uh, ML, your turn.
Um, wow, thank you. This is an incredibly critical piece of work. Um, so my thinking um, goes to how how to raise the bar to in fact move the needle. So my questions um, are three and they're kind of broad. I'll start with the solar, solar ready. So the point of that five percent onsite solar offs offset was to be able to engage an onsite solar capacity at a building. How do you track that? Are people actually installing their solar and getting that five percent? Is that trackable? Is that being tracked? Is everybody doing it? What are the statistics on that?
Yeah, I mean, for commercial buildings, any um, project coming through is going to be reviewed against that requirement. And then, and they'd have to have the system installed to get their um, completion and cer- certificate of occupancy.
So for the um, other solar ready requirements, how many of those quote solar ready projects actually activate their solar? Install their solar? Is it, is it causing any change, or is it just, okay, we've got our panel big enough to do this?
So I think you're you're getting at the point of, so in twenty seventeen, we just had the solar ready requirements. And we moved in twenty twenty to have the mandatory at least five percent requirements. Uh, because you weren't seeing that um uptake in in solar on on the commercial side.
Right.
We we didn't track the residential because the solar ready has been around for quite a while on that, so I can't comment partic- particularly, but most of the new construction is going in with some solar.
Um, so under, so I guess this is a a question and uh, on the solar ready language and directive. Is there consideration for something like install by solar ready to be installed by? So that we know that they're actually going to take action on it, and we're not just having um, that be a path check the box and not think about it again?
I think, Josh, this gets to your new homes when you want to comment on that a little bit.
So, yeah, so the the alternative that we had really proposed would would help kind of push the envelope to where they would want to be able to be possibly able to consider the um, the solar aspect with those incentives to help. And so, and I think back to your point too, you know, we could really um, I think it's something to to kind of look at and consider, um, because to your point, we we currently have this um, we want to encourage solar and help push the envelope, and I think we could, you know, we possibly could look at it from the city level and look at, you know, of the homes that have come through that were less than a certain, you know, square footage that would require solar ready. Did were any of those that came back through have an additional permit now for um, for solar? And so the other thing I wanted to mention also is, you know, you you try to set a requirement by a certain date. The problem that we run into is that there's a ton of material delays currently, and things are taking a lot longer times to to get. And so it's very hard. I mean, we've seen projects that have been wrapped up for construction. Um, they pull the permit for solar, say, a month later, and within the next five months is when the solar gets installed. So the the timeframe is really drawn out on those projects. Um, so it's very hard to say, you know, they need to install this by a certain timeframe, if that's what you were referring to, but um, my intent really with the the op- option for the DOE Energy Ready was to help, to help encourage these folks to to really look at this and 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 by putting money back in their pocket from the the little bit that goes into it, because there are studies out there for that DOE Energy Zero Energy Ready Home that show compared to like a zero energy home, um, it's about, I want to say a fifth of the cost, really. And so there's a, there's that savings that you're going to see there as well as the additional savings from, and I just mentioned one incentive, which was the forty five L. Um, we actually talked to Excel probably a couple of weeks back, and they mentioned looking at doing a program that would allow for ten thousand dollars uh, in rebates for electric ready. Um, and so are not what you're ready, but uh, the zero energy ready home. And so um, so there's, there's additional incentives that are available. It's just, I wanted to try and make that available to to anyone. And it's not just for the homes that are less than three thousand square feet. The homes that are greater than can also do it and get the incentives as well. They just have to do the solar to meet the requirement from the city is all, so.
And on the commercial side?
So on the commercial side of it.
Component, does that, uh, can that be? Um, is there anything in the process? I understand what you're talking about with our current situation with uh, the um, you know, getting materials and that kind of thing, but it it doesn't change anything if it's ready and doesn't activate. How do we, how do we jump over that?
Yeah, I don't think we're planning to backtrack on the commercial side, right, Josh? So all commercial projects would still be required, not just solar ready. They would have to install at least five percent.
Yeah.
And still have the space for the forty percent um, roof space. So I think in those cases, you're you're going to see a lot of those barriers. You're already going to see the solar on, and they're going to be using the roof space and and maximizing it to meet the other code requirements. So it's more of a residential consideration.
Got it. Okay. Um, okay, so my second, my second question is, um, it seems that the um, well, I'll ask a simple question, a simple question first. The vast majority of residential is existing. And so does it make sense to establish an electrification pathway for existing buildings? Because I think it was Mark that was talking about vast majority of that of the existing housing stock isn't gonna need to be complying with any of these regulations. So does it make sense to try to push, push, incentivize people weaning their houses off of gas? Which is a big can have a big impact.
Yes.
Yes, there there is consideration to.
Yes, no, yes, I think, yes, you're exactly right.
Yes. Yeah, so that that's kind of part of the the, a couple of slides we we go, we talked about encouraging electrification and like level four and level five and really looking to to help incentivize them to look at considering this as, you know, the writing's really on the wall. As we're starting to really encourage this, get it into code, the next step really, you know, once we get it codified for electric ready is is to look at, you know, electric, all electric requirements. And so that's really the hurdle I think that we're really looking at is to getting it codified to do electric ready. And then you really, once it's in there, the next step is to really enforce it as a mandatory requirement, which could be in coming years, so something to look at.
So I was just kind of proposing that a- and this may not be in the energy code, it might just be an incentivization for people who aren't going to do a level two or three or four. They're not going to really change anything. But to be incentivized to go electric. Just do that piece, that that this, you don't have to remodel your kitchen, you don't have to, you know, change a whole lot of stuff to electrify your house, to get off of gas. And I'm wondering if that pathway to electrification, and this is for existing buildings that aren't going to be coming through due to a remodel that are just out there and that are the vast majority of residents. So I I is is that thinking on the table at all, or?
Yeah, and I I would just point to Denver's in this case, um, and I think what you're talking about, ML, is um, uh, within code, there is a upon replacement or end of life requirements around electric or prohibition. Um, that's certainly something that can be considered. It is something that Denver has adopted in their commercial building codes. Um, I don't know that they they are looking at it for residential as well, but haven't gotten as far, so that's certainly on the table.
Right, right.
I would also just to give some additional clarification, ML, you know, in terms of a larger incentive program beyond construction or people doing something on their house would be outside of the scope of this particular project. But likely part of the scope of some of the larger work on the the road uh, roadmap and some of the work that Carolyn's department is leading. So we'll want to make sure that we keep uh, you know, constraints in terms of the work on developing this particular code and where it's applicable, to ensure that we can achieve that. So just wanted to point that out.
Oh, thank you for that. I I was recognizing that it was a little bit broader, but again, I'm I'm trying to point out broad things that might actually move the needle. Um, my last question. So a lot of the updates that you're talking about doing are to mitigate um, greenhouse gases and and carbon um, to more stringent uh, requirements. So my question um, is to get back to the source, right? So can, are you looking at, is the best highest efficiency standard already on the table? Is the DOE one that you're looking at? Are you looking at things that might be more stringent than that? And I'm thinking about the standard like perceived house. And has that conversation come up? Rather than trying to fix it after, okay, we're as efficient as we can get, given the standard we're putting out there. Now we've got all of this you know, excess carbon greenhouse gases, et cetera, to have to deal with and how we're going to deal with that. Just start at the beginning, make put up the highest standard that is out there, that is currently being used in perceived house. I mean, that's the only way you get to build when, if you're building in Germany. You know, these standards are out there, they're embedded, they work in commercial, they work in residential. And they have, they result in a much, much more efficient building than the standard that you're that you're talking about. Um, has, has that? Where, where is? Where are you guys regards to upping that?
So, so I can, I can mention this, and so actually built into the admin portion of the energy code, it gives us the ability to accept any above code programs that we deem to be fit. And so the reason I really looked at the DOE Zero Energy Ready Home is there were a ton of incentives that are out there available to help people go that route. And the reason I looked at this was it's similar to what we're currently requiring versus our 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 requirements for those homes that are less than three thousand square feet right now, or you know, it requires the ERI target and some other things, but this program now, the other thing I wanted to mention is it's an elective program. And so it's not, it's not a code requirement. It's that you can do, you could do this, or the alternative would be to do this above code program. And so the reason I say all that is, like, if if someone came to us and said they wanted to do passive house in the city, I don't foresee that would be a problem. So.
I I I'm, I'm not thinking that any, any city would say, no, you can't do better. I'm just saying, can we make better the standard? And it is a commercial, it is a commercial standard as well as a residential standard, and um, as we saw with the Martian fire, Excel was offering a double, uh, way above any of the other um, standards. A much higher incentive for achieving that, knowing that you're going to get a a superiorly efficient building out of it. So I I'm just wondering if you're thinking about any other, any, any higher standard? Because that changes a lot of stuff.
Yeah, and I I think that's a great suggestion, Josh. We can um, have our consultants look at like what that incremental difference would be um, in terms of efficiency versus cost. And so we can, we can take that and and bring that back when we are are bringing forward the the residential draft and the commercial.
Thank you so much. Those are my three questions.
Thank you for your questions.
ML, thanks. So um, I really appreciate my colleagues' questions. I have a couple of additional ones that weren't touched on. Um, in the uh, matrix that you showed of the EUI performance targets, the buildings that were noted only went up to fifty thousand square feet. But we definitely have buildings proposed pending before us now that are far greater than that. Are there performance targets for buildings larger than fifty thousand square feet?
So yes, and that's something we're also looking at um, as we update the code to to look at kind of encompassing those as well. Um, it's really, I think, where where we got with the twenty twenty code was to kind of dip our toe in the water of giving so many buildings the opportunity for this path. And so now that this, this path and this uh, option has been out there for a while, there's a lot more data for these buildings. And so we really have, I think, more power to to be able to look at targets and and be thoughtful about our selections versus just trying to hit the most efficient target. That may not be really cost, cost effective, so.
All right, that's great, because a lot of the projects that, a lot, we've seen more than a handful of projects that have come to us that are uh, manufacturing and production facilities, and they're very large, uh, and um, I have a feeling we're going to see more of those. So um, incorporating larger buildings into your into your work, I think would be great.
Well, one other thing to note real quick on that too is, is depending on so that's, in some aspects, that's why we have the model baseline path as well as they can actually model the building to see how it should perform. Um, there's just some limitations on the other EUI targets, and it could be, um, you know, we we have a ton of building stock that's that way, and so that may be why it limits that to the fifty thousand, because at that point, they really didn't have a ton of of building stock out there that they were able to to record that usage on yet, or It limits that to the fifty thousand because at that point, they really didn't have a ton of, of building stock out there that they were able to, to record that usage on yet, or. Um, that, that wasn't already out there. That's kind of tainting that, that pool, but, um, but no, to your point, we will definitely be discussing that with our, our consultant to look at that. And see if it, if there are some targets we can give for those larger buildings to make sure that. Um, you know, to, to provide that flexibility on the choice for the performance path, so.
Okay. Um, so a second question, the, in the document on page fifty, uh, you have what I, if I read it correctly, was the EV ready, EV capable. Requirements right now. Um, and I, I think that's what I was looking at. And I was, I have to say, I wrote down, wow, these numbers are really uninspiring. The, the, um, EV ready and EV capable, uh, requirements are pretty darn low and for, um, uh. High density, what I call high density buildings, but are either the. Three-story residential or the top, the higher residential which falls under commercial. Um, and I, can you just re- re- tell me, tell us what? You are proposing or, uh, how you're thinking about, because I think you don't have a proposal yet, how you're thinking about increasing. Those percentages and whether we could require. Up to fifty or even more percent, uh, charge-ready parking spots for those types of buildings.
So. The recent code that came out actually last week, um, with the, the state. Um, we are currently in align with, with the values that you see on the, uh, the table on that page. The only thing that really changes is multifamily. And so multifamily. They really increased the requirement from our ten percent up to fifteen percent. But I think to your note, this is really a starting point for us. So the values that they're gonna require us to be at, um, from the, the state code. Um, really is just a leaping off point for, for us here at the city, I believe. And, you know, with, with our. With our past and kind of our, our, our vision moving forward, I, I don't, I wouldn't be surprised if we do up those totals from what there is required. Um, now, I can't really speak to the amount of saying fifty percent needs to be this way. Um, you know, with that aspect, I, you know, we want to do a little bit of research and see, you know, where, where is that kind of break even point? Where does it make the most sense to really do it? And then, you know, um, a- and one thing to say about the EV ready and EV charging. Is it's very interchangeable. So your EVSE, if you have additional items there, it covers the other two areas. And so. Um, and then there's other, um, definitions now for EV capable, that EV capable light and. Yeah, so, um, but, but I think to answer your question and bring it back is. Uh, yes, we're looking at, um, using the state code as our baseline and really increasing the metric and the requirements on those. Um, you know, where it makes sense and, and kind of where's that, that happy balance with really that, you know, the best bang for the buck on the projects and what we're really, our goal is as a city. So.
Okay, um, when we get to, um, recommendations, I'm gonna bring that back up.
Okay.
Before I forget. Um, just a reminder. That we give a lot of parking reductions to large-scale developers. And I think that, um, they already. Benefit from that. And when you're calcu- when you're doing your econometric studies of what constitutes breaking even benefit. Uh. Bottom line, et cetera. Please try to take into account. The parking reductions and the savings that developers get from those.
That's a great point. Thank you. Yeah. Make sure they're more stringent maybe on those requirements because you're already getting a break. You might as well have to. Up the ante on what you're needing to do on an efficiency standpoint. So thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, um. Uh. Okay, page fifty-two, you talked about the challenges requiring all-electric construction requirements, uh, and you mentioned. Uh, the Berkeley case. I, I think I'm understanding those two being connected. Um, is there a tipping point in terms of? Uh, the percentage requirements for electric construction above which developers would just go ahead and go all-electric? I mean, I'm just trying to think about ways around the Berkeley challenge and it just, I just wonder if there's like some percentage. Uh, that would. Not be a hundred percent, so you would get around Berkeley. But would be big enough that the developer would just go, fine, I'm just gonna go all-electric.
So Carolyn, I, I'll let you speak to it, but I think that's really one of the avenues we're looking at is, is setting a metric for that. And go ahead, Carolyn, sorry.
Yeah, and it's one of the motivations behind the hundred percent offset of any natural gas use. Um. That, that definitely has a cost premium that, that goes with that, um, as one of the, the potential strategies. And then, um, the other one is we, I think we just have five percent. Um. Electric preferred right now as a margin. Um. That's basically kind of an on par kind of requirement. We definitely are thinking about. You know, whether that's a twenty percent or, uh. You know, more of a premium on a mixed fuel building. Um, and I don't know what the number is, but that's definitely one of the things we want to look at is, is where, where that would. Become the more. Cost preferred, as long as the technology is available. So definitely on our radar.
Okay, great. Um, okay, um. Solar access, um, I have a particular bugaboo about the way, um, large-scale solar farms eat up. Land that is not currently developed. And IBM, which Mark rec- m- mentioned, um, is one of those. It's just an example of. Land that wa- was not developed and is now developed. I mean, it's for a solar farm, so no complaints, but I, I mean, there are complaints, but. Um, to me, figuring out how to utilize, um, already-built environment for, um, onsite solar, I think is really valuable. However, it does. Bump up. At least here in Boulder, with what we're seeing with a lot of our multifamily developments, which is the use of the rooftop to meet outdoor space requirements. Um, and. Um, I would just like to ask. The question of how can we? How can we use this? Code that you're developing to incentivize the use of roof space for solar? And encourage the continued provision of private outdoor space for apartments, which is something that we see. Some developers, uh, um, trying to, uh, back away from, um, with that. Public space on top of the building. So I don't know how to exactly ask that as a question, but maybe I'll just say, is that something that, um? Uh, planning and. And you guys are discussing, like, what's the right balance of? Uh, to meet the opens, the personal, private open space requirements and the utilization of. The roof for solar. You can just say yes or no, and we'll think about it or something, but.
I'll go, it is now. Thank you. That's a really good point.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks. All right. Then one last question, which has to do with, a- and this may be an Edward question. Um, the urban heat island, um, effect. Has a huge impact on. Electricity u- or, uh, energy use, because if you, if you don't have shade. You have high usage for air conditioning for those people who do have air conditioning. So I'm, where, where is landscaping slash shade tree slash? Shade as a part of building construction? Connected to. The, to this code. How, how, how do those two, how do those pieces connect?
Certainly, and right now, um, not a strong connection necessarily, would be part of an additional effort, I would say, um. To look at, I do see it's coming with some of the roadmap work and some of the cool Boulder work on those items. It's not necessarily part of. The scope of what we see in energy conservation likely would go more in the title line, uh, land use and landscape requirements, but. It's, uh, certainly something that is coming up more and more as we do planning efforts, as we look at land use, as we look at our area plans even. Um, and would expect that we'll see something, um, it's not on the work plan this year to develop code for that, but would suspect some part in the future.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you very much. Um, it. We, does anyone else on planning board have additional questions that have come up as a result of anything your colleagues have asked? Okay. Okay, if not, then let's go to public. Uh, let's go to public comments on this issue. If anyone has questions, please raise your hand and then Vivian will call on you. And then after that, we'll take a quick five or 10-minute break and then come back for. Uh, recommendations to, um, to staff. If that's all right with everybody. So Vivian, do we have, um, any hands up?
I don't see hands, and I would ask, um, there's a couple of people, if you. Plan to speak, please change your name to your full name as well. People. Few more seconds. Okay, Lynn, please go ahead. You have three minutes, Lynn. And you should be able to see the timer.
Um, I can't see a timer.
Apologies for that. I'll just have to keep, uh, keep an eye on it. You'll hear it.
Yeah, it should be in one of the windows. Generally, can you get off of the? Presentation screen? Maybe that will open it up.
Could be. All right, let's.
In yours, it's.
It's in your view. Great. Yeah, thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Lynn.
If it was there and the screen just distracted me, but, but thanks. Yeah, um. Um. One thing that. Uh, that I was thinking about that this doesn't really address any of this stuff is how? How per capita? How much each? Person is using of space and having a, an. An embodied energy. Full life cycle analysis. Benefit range. For. People per space. Um. Because. I think that if I look ahead in the future, a hundred years, I think we're gonna have houses that are different, that are designed differently. Designed to. And, and not as compartments and not, um. Not as smaller units, you know, three hundred foot or efficiencies, but. Communal multifamily. Mo- multi-generational. Homes. With, you know, two refrigerators minimum for, you know, say two families or two kind of units of people. Within a house, um, that entirely redesigns the architecture. But. It saves so much in, for example, parking. Because. As you've discussed on some of these, um. Three hundred foot units, oh, we're gonna give a parking reduction, a height limit because they aren't using cars, but they are using cars because there's no storage. And these new houses of the hundred-year future have to have storage for multiple. You know, people living in the space. Because otherwise, what you get is just a big house with nobody living there. And. The other part of this situation is finding a way to reuse. Existing properties and the value of the full life cycle analysis and embodied energy of keeping. Um, pre-existing housing such as Alpine Bowls and. Um, and taking all the trade-offs of just, you know, uh, the electrical has to be redone. They're like, there are so many complexities. But just plastering it up so you have less physical space inside, but you do have, um, a more. Um. But, a, a long-term. Full life cycle analysis of more, uh, more energy carbon reduction. And I didn't see that. Particularly addressed in this kind of a plan. I think it's really good plan though, basically. But I'd like to see the more social aspects of it. Somehow.
You. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so why don't we take a, a ten-minute break, which means at least on my clock, we'll be back here at seven fifty-five. Um, and, uh, then we'll give our comments, uh, using the three key questions that staff asked of us. Alrighty? Carolyn and Josh and Mark, are you guys there?
Yep.
Doki. Mark, by any chance, are you back? Um, let's go ahead. I know he he'll be coming back to his desk in a minute. Let's go ahead and um. Uh, come back to our comments to staff using the three key questions. Um, my guess is that question number one and question number two, people will probably answer at the same time. Um, so the first question is. Hey, Kurt, will you tech? There is. Okay, thanks, Mark. Sorry, I want to make sure. Okay. Um, the first question is, does the planning board agree with the proposed area of focus for the twenty twenty-four? Quebec. Is that the way you're going to pronounce it? Quebec? Um, and the second question is, are there other areas of focus that should be included? The third question is, does planning board have any recommendations on the community engagement strategies? Why don't we take questions one and two together? And so each uh, planning board member can. If they if they agree with the proposed areas, just say yes. If they don't, explain why and then talk about what other areas of focus you would like to see included, because my guess is those. It's sort of this other side of the same question. Um, who would like to go first? Uh, ML, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Thanks. Um, so uh, the proposed areas of focus, the. Of the ones that are listed on page forty-five. Uh, the. One that I would add a piece to other requirements to analyze and reduce embodied carbon for new commercial construction. Um. I think materials with carbon are. Equal opportunity, right? It's just equally carbon um. Centric, whether it's residential or commercial, so I'm, I I. Would encourage a residential component. To the um, embodied carbon, I guess you're going to create metrics. I'm not sure. Uh, but that would be my comment on question number one. Do you want me to answer number two as well, Sarah, or should we?
Yeah, go ahead. I think so. I think they're sort of part of the same discussion.
Um, so the focus, and I've already talked about that a little uh, that I think should be included is. Can we raise the bar to perceive how standard? Um, is there, is that the highest? Can we get to the highest standard we possibly can as our as our base standard? Um, I think that will then trickle down to having an impact on all of the other things we're we're looking to measure. So. Those would be my team. Um, and I guess for number two of the focus. And I don't, I just is not an additional thing, but I would push electric as far as we can. I I know we're a little treading lightly because of the. Losses and that sort of thing, but. I I think we should take it as far as we feel we legally can. Um, because I do think weaning ourselves from fossil fuels, as we know, is the ultimate. Um, end game for reducing carbon in the atmosphere. That's one of the one of the biggies. So. Uh, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Uh, thanks, ML. Mark, you're next.
Thank you, Sarah. Um. So when a a project like this that touches everything, and it's just transportation, this land uses building codes. It it can get derailed or stymied by the fact that it does touch everything. But to me, um, for an area of emphasis is somehow it seems, as I read through this. And I think about our building code and our planning code and all our other other planning documents. I I it makes me wish for greater integration. Uh, and. Cross collaboration so that we don't have, uh, like, as Sarah pointed out, the the. The parking reduction that the planning department, staff and applicants apply for, and we're trying to encourage them to. Have more electrification. Anyway, it's it's so interrelated that it again, it just feels to me like this is here. And then we have a planning code here. And so I I I somehow wish that this was um, more integrated. So on to areas of emphasis. Uh, that's just my wish, but on to areas of of emphasis. Um, one of the things that struck me was I appreciate you uh, and your team commenting on. Uh, trying to bring equity into this. And one of the things that I've witnessed in uh, in. Carbon and energy reduction policies is the benefit accrues to the wealthy. And um, and it's really difficult to do otherwise, but we say, oh, we're going to give tax credits on new EVs. Well, that's great. But so the wealthy end up, because they can take the tax credit, they can afford a new EV. And and away we go. And so and and we don't view it as spending money because we gave a tax credit. So one of the thoughts I had was. We don't uh, discourage really large residential properties enough. And I know we had the large lot and large building project a while ago, but when I looked at this plan, I thought, you know, what we need to have. Is rather than make a house that's over five thousand square feet be net zero energy. We need to make it be head zero energy plus supporting. Um, a fund very similar to our inclusionary housing fund that would um, support the addition of rooftop solar or. Uh, yeah, community garden solar for other other lower income residents. And whether that's directly on there or whether it's a garden or whatever, I I don't say, but anyway, but it seems to me a weak point. In our whole system that we um, uh, we really uh, don't discourage enough. We don't provide enough sticks on the large house side of things. And and those people who can afford to build a five thousand square foot house in Boulder can afford. Uh, a little more to support the um, uh, energy conservation and and financial savings that solar can bring. Or other energy conservation measures can bring to our lower income residents. Um, and uh. I I want to completely agree with Sarah that that the EV. Numbers are completely uninspiring. They are, they are shy of where that I I perceive they ought to be. And um, and in fact, the the other thing that seems to be missing is. Is uh, the in emphasis on shared EVs that as we go forward. The the requirement for me to own an EV is going to be continue to be diminished. And so I think the code, whether it's here or somewhere else, needs to emphasize. Shared vehicle spaces and shared vehicle requirements, because we need fewer vehicles. Not only just internal combustion engine vehicles, we just need fewer vehicles. And a car spends almost all of its time unused. Um, finally. Um. You know, uh. I, we always talk about TDM and uh, in parking. And so um. This seems to me that you're you're touching on parking and you're touching on electrification. And um, it doesn't seem. So I I'm confused because it's not so much a building code. We have, you know, but it's not just a TDM or or planning code. And so if if this is going to be part of or integrated or in form, a developer's TDM plans. Um, it it needs to uh. It needs to be more thoroughly addressed and more creatively addressed in terms of how uh, you deal with. Uh. Both parking electrification. Uh, pedestrian cycling facilities, that kind of stuff, because all of those things can contribute to a building's overall net zero capacity. So those are, those are my comments.
Thanks, Mark. Laura?
Thank you. Um, so the first question is, do we agree with the proposed areas of focus? And I will say this is not my area of expertise, so I don't have a lot of comment about that. I think that what you propose sounds good. The one thing that I think will be very helpful is when you give a presentation like this, whether it's to another board or city council or doing community outreach. Is to give just a brief context of the whole roadmap and what is this piece that you're talking about today? Because through the discussion, I picked up on this is just about buildings. And moreover, it's just about new buildings or renovated buildings or additions to buildings. And it's not about energy code for for homeowners that are not changing anything. It's not about traffic and minimizing greenhouse gas emissions from vehicles. It's not about how changing land use would change greenhouse gas emissions. It's just about regulating buildings. And so giving people kind of that context, I think, would be help them to understand more going in, what to expect. And how to receive your areas of focus and whether they would like to expand them or not. Um, so that's uh, my answer to that one. Um, I do want to weigh in on again on this, um, the equity piece, because I think this is really something that you have already given a lot of thought to. And I would like to encourage even more thought on this, because I know the city, something I learned in my year as liaison to the landmarks board. Is that the city gives breaks in the energy code for certain purposes that the city wants to encourage, one of which is historic preservation. And that is one of the incentives that the landmarks board can grant is that. A building that is landmarked does not have to meet the energy code when it is renovated and restored. Um, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I know that that is possible. And I think that, you know, at least for us on planning board, for me, and I think my colleagues as well, one of our priorities is affordable housing. Is trying to make keep boulder affordable so that we don't hollow out our middle class. We do have income diversity, which leads to other kind of diversity. And so if we want that, we have to be really. Clear-eyed and honest with ourselves about the impact of these changes, which is going to be to raise the price of construction, at least the initial construction. And so thinking about how do we marry this priority to to reach, you know, net zero energy or reduce our greenhouse gas emissions? Um, and also not discourage or make it less um. You know, lower the volume of affordable housing that we can afford to provide with the same money, right? And so what are the things that we can do for affordable housing providers, whether that is giving them a break like we do for historic preservation properties? Or if it is increasing, thinking really seriously about what are the subsidies that are available? And do we need to increase the kinds of subsidies or types of subsidies that we offer so that we are not negatively impacting our affordable housing provision? So I just want to really emphasize that and say, I know everybody has our hearts are all in the same place. And um, I look forward to even more creative thinking about this challenge.
Thanks, Laura. Kurt?
Well, uh, first of all, thank you to, especially to Mark and to Laura for bringing up this equity issue, which definitely is. Something that I really want to focus on too. I won't repeat all their comments, but. To me, clearly equity, part of equity is demanding more from those who have more resources. And um, so, you know, really, really making sure that these. The giant houses that we get, all too many of in this city are doing. Everything possible to be as efficient as as possible, including. Perhaps ML's suggestion of positive house standard. Um, and potentially also, I love Mark's suggestion of an analog to the Affordable Housing Fund. That would. Be um, that would help to fund, you know, the the energy efficiency for people who don't have as many resources. I think there are a bunch of things there that we need to to think about. We also need to think about how we don't, how we avoid disincentivizing. Missing middle housing, which we desperately need uh, in this town. Um, so I I think uh, yeah, I think that there's more to do. I I I appreciate your emphasis on equity, but I think there's more to be done there. I think we could also do more in terms of the embodied energy uh, in that regard. If I ran the circus, I would say. If you're building a house or a building, a a building, a. A a dwell, a residential building, then you would have a particular per unit embodied energy budget. That's fixed and it maybe it is enough to build a standard, you know, two thousand square foot house. And if you want to build more than that, and with a bigger foundation and a lot more steel and stuff like that, well, you need to figure out how to do that, right? Um, so so somehow incorporating the embodied energy of these very large houses. And and um, that that we're currently getting and reducing that to make it fairer is where I'm trying to go with that. We talked about the onsite solar. I was a little. We talked about the onsite solar. I was a little unclear where we were going. It does seem like. As the grid becomes more and more renewable heavy, onsite solar becomes. Less important and it it has various inefficiencies, right? Because it requires per. Kilowatt hour generated. It requires more infrastructure. It requires the inverters are less efficient. Um, there's more structure. There's more wiring and so on compared to utility scale. Or or even solar garden scale. Um, and so I think it seems like we should be de-emphasizing that. Um, and maybe instead emphasizing just efficiency. Um. There was discussion earlier on about the outdoor heating, like heated pools and. Grills and stuff like that. And boy, I would love to. Impose really stringent requirements on those. Like, if you want to have a heated pool. In this day and age, then then you should really be um. You should be making up for that energy cost in a big way. Uh, or if you want to have, you know, private outdoor heaters. The patio heaters or something. That it seems like something that we should definitely be discouraged. Uh, the last thing I want to talk about is cool roofs. And I don't know if this really falls under this uh under the provisions of this, but. We recently replaced our roof and we were able to get a cool rated shingle. For zero additional cost. And uh, and you know, they they helped cool, keep the house cooler, and they also helped to reduce the heat on effect. Because they don't heat up the surrounding area as much either. And. I think it would be great to just say, if you're replacing the roof in Boulder, you need to have a be cool roof rated. Uh, as I said, for at least in our experience, it was no additional cost, seems very simple. Uh, and I think that the benefits are pretty significant. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Um, okay, so I think I'm the last one. Um, uh. I'm gonna repeat some of what has been said. Uh, I I I appreciate Edward saying that the um landscaping shading, et cetera. Fits into a different component of the the broad integrated work. But I do think it would be useful um because of that integration or overlap to think about as you go through this. Maybe establishing some design and landscape requirements through Title IX. For new buildings that could add to the um to reduce reduced um. Energy needs and. An example that's in my head that I'm not suggesting you you do this, but the buildings that have built out um. A shade, I don't know what they're called, but they go above windows and they provide some some immediate shade and they're permanent. They're not um. They're not internal to the building. They're external to the building. You know, does that would that prove to be something like that prove to be um cost effective? Additional design requirements um for new buildings that would. Offset um some of the energy needs of that building. So that's one. Uh, one thought, um, uh, definitely increase EV ready, EV capable, especially in a commercial and multifamily R two buildings. Um, and marry that or consider how that you might marry that to the parking reductions that are given. Um, in terms of the housing affordability issue. Um, I think we absolutely have to do an analysis of the impact of all these proposals on housing costs. Um. Uh, not because we shouldn't make these changes, but we have to be cognizant of. What is gonna, what does, we already are in a very expensive place to live, even if you can afford a big fancy schmancy house. I I have a couple of friends who have big fancy schmancy houses and they pay a lot of money to the city for that. Um, and uh, but the cost of. Uh, all housing will go up, and I think we really need to do an analysis so that we know what it is we're. We're doing to our housing um stock. Um, add buildings above 50,000 square feet to the EUI. That's item number four. Item number five. Um, so we have a really old housing stock. And a lot of those old houses are rental units that have landlords who have no incentive to renovate or upgrade. Uh, and those those houses just deteriorate under heavy usage. So I wonder if we might want to explore or we, it might make sense for the city to explore. Uh, some combination of incentives and penalties to. Encourage landlords to renovate rental units that are older than some X number of years. And I don't know what that X is. Uh, but so that we. We don't end up with this sort of weird brand new houses and brand new apartment buildings and then crumbling. Old houses and and um. Thinking especially up on the hill. So I think that's something that we might want to see if that can fit into the scope. And maybe it's just into, maybe it's in Caroline's. Carolyn's work scope, but I think it's an important issue. So in the sixth item is in the material that you shared with us, you talk about how um. I can't remember what page. There's there'll be lower utility bills and lower maintenance. Uh, due to transition to electric. Uh, no, utility bills frankly are determined by how much profit Excel is allowed to make. And um. Uh, and they make a lot of profit. And um, I think I realize that this is not specifically about. Construction standards, but. If we really care about the people who will be living in these buildings or working in these buildings and paying the utility bills. The cities, the city has to figure out. It has have, we have to figure out how to. Continue to push the state to make sure Excel's rates actually do go down as we move to. Alternative energy sources, not just that we continue to pay them the same amount when they're using solar. Versus when they're using coal, uh, because then the prices, it will change nothing. And um, the goal here is not just to not be using fossil fuels, it's also to. Ultimately reduce costs for residents and and we have to make sure that that's part of our work. And then my last piece here. I so there's one type of building, it's more of a that you didn't really talk about, which is HOAs. And um, so I live in an HOA. And what we had a conversation many years ago about putting solar on our roofs and we can't because of our HOA regulations. Um, so I I don't know exactly if that's specific to our HOA or to all HOAs, but I think it'd be helpful just to understand. Uh, what limitations there might be for buildings like or little developments like ours that might want to. Renovate to and make ourselves a solar building or buildings. Uh, but I again, that might not be in the scope of this work, but I there are a lot of HOAs around and it might be worth just sort of exploring that and figuring out how that intersects with the work you all are doing. Okay, um, before we move on to the last question, any other comments that people want to make? Any comments that staff wants to make back to us? Other than we're making your lives very difficult?
No, I think I think those are great points, so.
Okay. All right. And then the last question you asked was, does planning board have any recommendations on the on community engagement strategies? Um, I have one, which I'll just get out of the way, which is, I really feel like, or two, actually. Uh, please engage with empower our future. Um, those are folks who know a lot about Excel and a lot about energy usage. And then also, can I make a recommendation that you push back your planned first reading until? Maybe early in 2024, there will be a new combination of city council members in November of 2023. And whatever that combination is, some subset of them will be. Deer in headlights being handed a first reading of a complex ordinance like this. So I would just recommend maybe taking that into account in your scheduling. Does anyone have comments about a quick question number three? Uh, Laura.
I would just recommend really focusing on the stakeholder groups that are already knowledgeable and know that they're impacted. Like builders, developers, individual homeowners who have recently tried to pull a permit for a renovation or a rebuild. Um, I think if you try to do like a general public open house, it's going to be just impossible to explain this to. People who don't have a really good reason to want to understand it. Um, I don't know how you would engage with the community connectors. I would look to them for advice on if there's a way to. Share some of this and get some input from disadvantaged communities. Um, uh, you know, especially on any equity impacts. Um, but I think that you will get some of that from talking with the developers of affordable housing, which I'm sure you will be talking to, like Thistle and Habitat. Um, Boulder Housing Partners. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Thanks, Laura. ML.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I have. Um, two. Suggestion to to, yeah, two thoughts. Um. This is a complex subject. But it's one that impacts everybody. So my suggestion is that. Include in your presentation of efficiency standards, illustrate them such that. You. Anchor, you relate the standard, the changes, the current, the potential, the future. To buildings and building sizes. I think one of my colleagues talked, a couple of my talked about the impact of big houses. I mean. It's a, it's a, I think undocumented, we all see it. But it would be nice to see the data. It would be nice to see, oh, hey, this 1,500 square foot house. You know, given these standards would have this amount of impact to XYZ. A 5,000 square foot house would have this much. I think to begin to illustrate with data, the um. That there isn't disproportionate impact. Of big houses onto the community. And I think if we could illustrate that through the efficiency standards, I think that would be. An important thing to be able to get across as well as um. With the embodied energy. And that's going to be the big one, right? Because 5,000 square feet of materials versus 1,500 square feet of materials. It's going to be very, very visual to see the impacts. And I think that that's an important component, not only to start looking at the equity issue. But to start having the community. Begin to bring to the table. Um. And maybe this is where the land use starts getting pushed, which is not. Clearly not part of this project. But it will, it will cause people to think about the interconnectedness of, okay, how are we using our land and is this really the best use of our land? I think it will give us the opportunity to put the question that is circling the globe. How do we reduce our our carbon? Emissions. And how do we as a community? What are the things that we do and we see on a daily basis? And I think if you if you can take the presentation and put it into that um. Into that context, so people can find themselves, oh, I'm this person. This is my size house, this is my size house, or, you know, I mean, I think we do that with. Cars with transportation because that's kind of simple to do, but it doesn't really happen with with houses. With buildings and maybe even with commercial buildings. Um, I I would suggest that to to bring it home would be a really good way to get. People to recognize the importance. Of this, um. The role that are that the energy code plays in creating the city we want. And you know, I think Excel did a really good thing when they presented their incentives and all the different. Um, impacts for the Marshall built. That was one way where. You know, people like, why does the sea piles get double and triple? What is that? They became very intrigued. With with that kind of thing. So I think that there, that might be a model. I don't know if you bring Excel to the table, but. That idea of giving people a way to actually personalize. I think would really help in um. Presenting this complex set of codes to the to the public and even to the stakeholders.
Thanks, ML. Um, all right, last call for comments before we close the public hearing. All right. Uh, Josh, Carolyn, Rob, Edward, thank you very, very much for this presentation and. We know you'll be back in front of us sometime in the next year. So thank you very much and thanks for all the work you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight.
All right, um, okay.
Thank you guys so much.
And Rob, welcome to, and Josh, both of you, welcome to Boulder, to Boulder. Um, okay, finally, we're getting to matters and Hella is going to. Give us some insight into ordinance eight, five, seven, nine.
Yeah, good evening, planning board. I actually didn't uh have not been planning to give a presentation on this item. It was included in the packet just for informational purposes. Um, it's a sensitive item because it relates to a potential settlement of the of a legal dispute. So any negotiations that occurred as part of mediation under this lawsuit cannot be discussed. Um, and of course, it's a sensitive item because the city currently is still um being sued. So. Uh, with that in mind, I am still available to answer more questions, but I do realize that it's it's difficult to discuss.
So maybe what makes sense is if anyone on staff, I'm sorry, anyone on the board has questions that they just reach out to you directly off off out of a meeting? Does that make sense?
That would work great. Yes.
Okay, so let's plan for that. Um, I know there've there already been some communication, but if there are additional questions. You know how to reach Hella. Um, okay, Hella, thank you. Thank you for sticking with us all this evening. Um. Uh. We need, where is uh? Who are we missing? We need to talk about, does anyone have matters? Mark has a matter. Mark, what is your matter? And then Kurt has a matter. Wait, you're you're muted, Mark.
Thank you. Um, I was prepared to make a motion. I I I think we can't move on from this particular agenda and without. Uh, making a motion and adopting that motion. Is that correct?
Mark, I think that suggested motion language that's in the memo is for city council, not for us.
Oh, oh, excuse me. Okay, fine. I I don't need to make that motion.
Um, was that, okay, uh, Kurt. You're also muted.
Yeah, I have uh two things. First of all, just a very quick update on the Boulder Junction Phase Two Multi-Board Working Group. Which I attended, uh, there will be a city council study session on Thursday. Regarding both junction phase two, there are. Sort of three basic options of land use, which some of you may have seen at the open house. And there are three different place type or character options. So uh, I won't go view all the details, but this is moving, oh, and there are some transportation, a few transportation connections being proposed. To be added. So anyhow, I just wanted to give super quick update on that. If anybody has questions. I will take them, but I have one other thing.
Okay, so does anyone have questions for Kurt on Boulder Junction? Okay, so does anyone have questions for Kurt on Boulder Junction? Okay, go on to your next item, please, Kurt.
Okay, well, I did. I did my duty of reporting back to my board.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you. The other question is very important because it relates to donuts. So people keep asking me about the Voodoo Donut Building getting repainted. And the claim is that that was in service of a city requirement. But I am aware of nothing outside of the the historic preservation code that restricts pink color. Can anybody enlighten me, was that a city requirement at all? And if so, what was it?
Hella? Or Edward? Hella, you go first, then Edward.
I believe what you referred to as a requirement that comes out of the sign code. So the color of a building, if it's specific to a particular product or business and identifies it, then that can count towards the sign area under the sign code. And I think I don't know exactly the analysis that occurred, but it was a sign code determination.
Edward, you have something you want to add?
No, that's, Hella, hit it just right there. So if there's other questions, we can try to answer them.
And so was it because then the building is very large and it was too large for a sign? Is that sort of the way that that worked?
Generally, it turns the entire building into the sign if it's associated with that particular business and seen as part of how they would advertise themselves. So then it would well exceed the the maximum allowed that for signage.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
The good news is it won't change the taste of Voodoo Donuts. They'll still be delicious and nutritious. Okay, Mark and then Laura.
Yeah, so actually Kurt reporting on his participation in the T V process made reminded me that while we did successfully align, get everyone appointed to a board or a job. I I am uncertain as to who is my alternate on landmarks board and if I am an alternate for someone else on some other item. Did we, as a result of that meeting, ever come up with a a published list of who was assigned to what and who the alternate is?
Devin, I think you would be the person who would have taken those notes. Do you have a material you can send out?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I did go ahead and send out to the board when we first did those nominations, a little spreadsheet that listed everybody's secondary and primary board allocation. I can go ahead and find that and send it back out to you guys so you have it.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I must have missed it, but thank you.
All right, Mark, thanks. Laura?
Thank you. A quick follow up question on Voodoo Donuts, do we have any sense of when it's opening? I think a lot of people are eager about that.
I do not have a good sense. I did see just the other day they were doing some construction inside, so hopefully sooner rather than later. But I would encourage people to talk with the proprietor in terms of what their plans are.
Thank you. A quick update on the airport as your liaison. We do have our third airport community working group meeting will happen tomorrow. And at that meeting, the working group will get the first peek at the, I believe it will be four scenarios that have been developed, draft scenarios, and we'll get to comment on them at that stage. And then after that, there will be, I believe, another round of open house and survey for community input on the refined draft scenarios. The next step after that is to narrow down to a preferred scenario. So that's the pathway moving forward, and I think it's going to happen relatively quickly. So I think look for some community engagement next month. So that's airport update. Any questions on that?
Okay. Wait, I actually do have a question. They're just going to send, you guys are just going to send one, one scenario to council?
I think that is staff's intention. And and it's, to be clear, it's not the community working group's decision. The community working group will be one source of input along with the open house and the survey and the disadvantaged community outreach and other sources of input to staff. It will be staff and the consultant who try to narrow down to one preferred scenario. I have been pushing hard for city council needs to understand all of the scenarios and how they were evaluated and what was the input that was received on them. Because I don't know how we narrow down to one preferred scenario, given the very, very diverse opinions in this community and the very disproportionate engagement of one stakeholder group.
So can I ask a question when and maybe this is, maybe you know the answer and maybe Hella will know the answer. So what what will actually come to planning board in terms of of the working group? And what will what will we see and be asked to comment on before it goes to council?
I am not sure that there is any intention to ask us to comment before it goes to council.
Hella, do you, is that accurate? Do you know anything different or?
I'm not involved in that work of the city, so I can't tell you one way or another.
I can ask that question as your liaison, but my understanding so far is that they do not plan to make the rounds of the boards before they go to council with a preferred scenario. So I'll ask.
Okay, because it seems like, I think you're right, that we'd want council to know what all four were and why they came up, why they chose X, A, B, C, or D, so that they can actually have a conversation about all four. But we have to figure out if we have a role in in encouraging that.
So if you I think it's always going to be our prerogative to send a letter to request a presentation. I just don't know if staff proactively plans to ask for anything of us, not as far as I'm aware, but I could have misunderstood something.
So maybe at the next meeting you can report, you can let us know if there if they are planning to bring to us something. And if not, we can then discuss how we'd like to, if we'd like to do something about that, if we can do something about that.
I will definitely ask the question and report back.
Great.
Yep.
Okay.
And any other questions on that one? I do have two more, just real quick matters items. So the the two things I want, I just wanted to remind that there are a couple of things that we've brought up or I've brought up in the past that I think that we're waiting on. One is to understand whether our meeting notes as a planning board will only focus on our answers to the key questions that are asked by staff, or if the notes will also include general comments. And I I know Devin was working on that and consulting with other colleagues. I don't know if there's an update on that or an estimated, like, when we will get an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely. I can touch on that a little bit. So I did go ahead and I did go ahead and have a meeting with Brad and a couple of other folks about the meeting minutes there. And it's 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 a little bit difficult because planning board does kind of operate outside of the norm when it comes to about boards and commissions. So we're kind of working on actually developing a standard operating procedure when it comes to the meeting minutes. But we will be, in theory, going ahead into taking on, when it comes to more complex issues and a little bit more detailed items, well, we will be going ahead and taking a general kind of comments as they go. But our main focus going forward will continue to be the just the key issues on that part.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to know because it helps us structure how we put our comments together. And I think it also, it also does put a lot more pressure on staff and how they construct those questions so that we can answer them and get the things that that planning board wants to advise on into the record. So thank you for that. And then the other thing is I had asked at a previous meeting, if there's any information that staff can provide around the height limitation that was approved by voters and kind of what was the conversation at that time? And what was the exact ballot ballot language that voters approved? Just so that I better understand what was the intention at that time around the height limit. And Brad had said he would look into that and he wasn't sure if that would come back to us as a presentation or maybe a memo or how that would look. But I just wanted to make note of, I'm still very eager to to get that information if staff are able to offer it.
I can touch on that really quick. I did go ahead and collaborate with Brad and Charles on this a little bit. And we're hoping to get you a memo of like the history of the height regulations by on for the 20th, the meeting on the 20th. We're hoping, fingers crossed, but if not, it'll be just be the meeting after that, so should be coming shortly.
Great, that will be so helpful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. That was it. Thank you, Sarah.
That was it. Okay, last call for matters. Nothing. All right. This may be the earliest we have ever, ever wrapped up a planning board meeting. Congratulations to us, eight forty one, and I am officially adjourning this meeting.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.